Yes, good morning to everyone. My name is Victor Anytai Patterson. We are live today. I have an interview with Jacob Weidemeyer. He's part of the board that governs Amsterdam South East, the city council of Amsterdam South East. We are believing God to have an update on the status, his portfolio, what he's been doing throughout this pandemic. So we will know exactly what is happening. So Jacob, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, how are you so far?
I am fine. I had my first vaccination, my first shot against COVID. So I'm very glad I'm now more protected. But I'm awaiting my second shot in June. So then I will be completely protected.
Okay, I haven't had mine yet.
I think you're younger than me.
Yeah, I would be, I would be fifty. I would be fifty this year. So but I have already gotten the information in. I only have to call for an appointment.
Yeah, please do. The first shot already protects you a lot. So it's very important, yeah.
But so far I did not test positive anyway.
Yeah, good for you, good for you. But you know, there's always the risk.
That's right. The risk is there and the reality of the existence of this pandemic and this disease is also there. And that is why we ought to also be aware of it and not take it for granted.
Yeah, you have to know, yeah, you have to know the people in the IC. I know forty, fifty, so our age.
Yes, yeah, that's right, our age, which which actually confirms the fact that the vaccination has worked because they started with those who had health challenges. And then they came to the older age. So if now the average and the number of people in the IC intensive care are the ones who have not yet received the vaccine, then it tells you that it has held those who were those who had already taken it. So I would advise that if you are out there, when you get the invitation, go do it. It's for free, you don't pay anything. Jacob, let's get to the business of the day.
Yes.
So far, so good. We realize that all the restrictions are being released. We are, we are coming to a place where we can do things easily out there. What are some of the things that were put in place so that it has really held, looking at your portfolio?
What are things that are put in place?
That were put in place, that that actually, because whatever we are seeing today, where measures that were taken that had helped us so far.
Yeah, okay, yeah. But of course, held us was, of course, the lockdown and the and the consequences for the economy. Many people were laid off in Zuid Oost, in Zuidoost, especially in Schiphol and Bloemenveiling in Aalsmeer. So we had to accept a lot of more unemployment. But still, many people applied for support at the gemeente, at the municipality, at our organization, Zuidoost Werkt, Southeast Works. And more than a thousand people have asked for help to get a new job. And we are trying to rearrange the jobs and to see that people have, will get other jobs. And from these thousands who have applied for support, we could help five hundred people. So that's, yeah, it's nice, yeah. Because of course, in the Schiphol and other places, the work deteriorated, the places. But on the other hand, in distribution center and other places, there was more work. So we could rearrange people from one side to the other. And I would still ask people to come to Zuidoost Werkt, a call or app to get help, to see what is necessary to get a job if you don't have a job.
Okay, so what you are saying is apart from those who came in for support, financial support, you were able to give out, get jobs for others who you could, let me say it, re- 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 employ in other.
Yeah, in other areas of the economy. Yes, that's true, yeah.
And are there numbers? You said about five hundred out of the thousand, about five hundred were able to be employed.
Relocated, yes.
Relocated, okay. Yeah, that that is quite a number. And I would say that, okay. So what, which sectors were really attractive for this relocations?
So I already said the distribution centers, yeah, healthcare, of course, that's obvious. Everything in building and construction of the of the houses, because we are building and constructing a lot. Logistics and yeah, that's about it.
Okay, okay. So at least for 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 almost this time, instead of them staying home and yes, receiving support from the government, we've been able to give them something to do. So they've been re-employed in different sectors. And it's, that's right. So my question is, should someone want to get this kind of help? The person has lost the job and is looking for a place where they could find a job to do. Where do they have to go? Which numbers do they have to call? Where is the contact point?
Yeah, the contact point, we actually have a contact point, but it's closed at this moment due to the regulations in Amsterdam Support. But you can call now on a cellular phone number and I can give you the number, zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. I will repeat the number, zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. Or you can write an email, but it's in Dutch, zuidoostwerkt@amsterdam.nl.
Okay, so we have zuidoostwerkt, this Z U I D O zero O O S T verkt, so W E R K T apostrophe or at amsterdam.nl. That is where you can send the email and the telephone number you could call if you are unemployed and looking for a job at this moment. You can call zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. So I am curious. So my point is, it did not only hit documented people, but let us see undocumented. What are, what are some of the things that we were able to do for them?
Well, in the past, but it's the past, we accepted all undocumented people who had no housing. Unfortunately, the city government has stopped this provision from the first of June onwards. And at this moment, we are still distributing a lot of food due to the food solpunt in Amsterdam. So there are a couple of big informal food distribution points where a lot of undocumented, thousands of people are receiving food. And it's our intention to continue it for this year.
Okay, to 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 till the end of this year.
Yes, that's our intention. We need to make the decision still because it costs a lot of money, of course. We are talking about hundreds of thousands of euros. So but the city government is, has the intention to prolong it until the first of January next year.
Okay, that that would be nice because there are still others who are even afraid to get out there and get involved and be helped.
Yeah, of course, I understand. But yeah, we can do so much as a government, as a local government. Because of course, we also have to, we are working on the edge of the of the law at this moment.
That's right, trying as much as possible not to break.
Within our possibilities without getting into trouble ourselves.
That's right.
We are in South East, you know that.
Yes, yes, in South East, yeah. So the summer is coming. We are, we are loosening all of these restrictions. And I believe that normally during the summer, we would be going on holidays, we'll be having some fun. But looking at the way things are, we wouldn't be able to travel the way we want to travel. Are there some activities that have been planned from your section or from the city council to engage? Because you know, we're talking about the young people and even the old people that everybody wants to, when it's summer, we want to get out there.
Yeah, well, I'm responsible for the, for my, for the local sport in South East. And we have, we are doing at this moment a lot of activities, especially for the young people, but also for the elderly. And there is a lot, I have a lot. For example, we have the Sport and Fun Tour, which is already going in many places in South East. And it's three days a week. I think, I believe it's Monday, Wednesday and Fridays at fourteen thirty, so it's half past two in the afternoon. And you can just go along with all the sports which are offered there for free. It's for free, it's very important. Documented, undocumented, doesn't matter. Everybody can join if they want to. And you can just go there and see what is going to happen. We have a lot of sports in Summer Festival, Molken Festival. Maybe have you heard it last year? Yeah. It's because of course, there are so many young people who will not go attending any holiday and need to go some, do something. And we can all see that people are in the Gasplas, in the Nelson Mandela Park, having a lot of fun, but sometimes also having troubles. So we are making, yeah, we know how it works. And so we're thinking, maybe we could offer extra sports. And that's right, Middelbo Mokko. And it's not only a South East program, it's an Amsterdam-wide program. Okay. So you can also go to other parts of the city if you really want.
Okay, so the whole of Amsterdam is doing this. So are there, are there different places that all of these activities are being held?
Well, of course, in the Nelson Mandela Park, where we have a sports park, but there are also other parks. It's difficult for me to remember. Well, you can see it on the website, zuidoostwerkt.nl.
Okay, zuidoostwerkt.nl, okay, okay. So yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and you can also go to the recently opened Sportloket in Amsterdam Support. It's in the old post office, where now the building is of I Am Young. Maybe people have heard of it. It's a big building and you can just go in and just ask for any sports in your neighborhood. You can also call, we have also a telephone number. And you can, you Dutch and English to approach the people. There's a new number and other number than the previous number. And this number is zero six three four four five zero eight six six. So zero six three four four five zero eight six six.
Okay, so for for the unemployment, we have this telephone number, zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. If you happen to be unemployed at this moment, you're looking for a job. And for the sporting activities that would take place throughout this summer for you to be engaged, not to stay home and feel bored and all of that, you can also call this telephone number, a separate telephone number, that is zero six three four four five zero eight six six. I repeat, zero six three four four five zero eight six six. And you would be helped. Or if you want to talk to somebody directly, then you go to Amsterdam Sport, Amsterdam Sport. If you live around the Amsterdam South East, Amsterdam Sport, the former place where the post office was, that building. Go there, ask for information on which addresses and which locations you could go for sporting activities anywhere in Amsterdam. So it is not limited to Amsterdam South East, but anywhere in Amsterdam.
Yes.
Okay. But so far, before we even go on to the next items and talk about other things, what are some of the challenges that were, were, were very prevalent during this pandemic?
One of the main challenges, we, it was already a challenge before the pandemic, to be quite honest, is the rate of illiteracy in South East. I think about thirty percent of the inhabitants of South East do not master Dutch properly. But it doesn't mean that they are literate in their own language, but they are illiterate in the Dutch language, which of course is a lot, which gives a lot, a lot of problems, of course, in dealing with the authorities or with your employer or in daily life. So the city council offered a lot of subsidies for people to get into training courses. But we saw here in the, in the South East that although we have a lot of training courses, language courses, people were not able to find them. So what we made as a new point, it's in Dutch tal informatiepunt, it's the information point for language, where we, where we put three people who have the knowledge of all the formal and informal language courses we have in South East and outside of East. And what people should realize, it's for the documented, of course, that the, the, the language courses are a lot of, in most cases, free. They do not cost money. So people do not know that. People are not going to the language courses because they cost money. They're heard, they've heard it costs money. But there are a lot of free courses also. And it's difficult to find for the people. But we see that improving your language is also improving your chances on the labor market.
That's right. And even, and even your, your chances of socializing.
Yeah, socializing, of course, it's, it's number one, of course, being able to talk with your neighbors or in the buurt house or wherever your social life is. And it's very important that people try to make the next step because it's difficult to master the Dutch language, especially if you do not master English also because English and Dutch are of course connected with each other. But unfortunately, there are also many people who are not able to master English either. And then it's very difficult to master Dutch.
That is why our, our organization, for instance, Rekogen is, also has this lessons. And then we, not directly, directly or indirectly, then we are also able to help those who are not basically with the English or control the English language. We are able to also help them so that they can also have the language balance in there. So we, we, we work hand in hand with your, 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 your city council to be able to get this also rolling out and be able to help the community also.
Very good.
The, 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 the level of illiteracy, not illiteracy as in someone not being educated, but someone not being able to speak the language or read and understand the information and be able to work with the information that is provided. So that is where one of the major problems that you are facing. And then also providing the, 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 the means to be able to get the, the language under control, getting people, getting places. So you have locket where people can go to learn this, these languages, this language.
You can just call the, the, the previous number of Zuidoost Werkt. We have located the people at Zuidoost Werkt. And you can just call and ask for support. And we will check your level. Are you, are you, are you a starter or are you developed already? And do you want to improve? Because any improvement of the language will mean that you have a broader, broader, how do you say it? You have more possibilities to apply for jobs on a broader scale.
That's right, that's right.
And any, any step is necessary and important. And of course, it depends on the people, how much effort they are able to put in. You also have your family and your work, of course, or. But I think it's important that people try to make the next step. It's, it's a challenge, but I think it's a good challenge and worth to, to invest.
Talking about, I would like to take a few minutes to try to roll it, all the information we've sent, we've talked about now in English, a little bit into our Vanakonal language, the Chi language, so that my, my people can also understand to some level. I mean, your friend.
Yeah, can I add that we have three speaking people in South East where?
Oh, Chi-speaking people?
Yes.
Okay, so in South East Verkt, you can also Chi people, speaking people.
Yeah, you have to apply for it in English, of course. But if you want to be called back in Twi, we can arrange.
Okay, so if you want to be called back in Twi. So. Ni ayekenyi na nomene ayeye Jacob Weidemeyer, N E kasa. Oh, ye juma ewo city council, oka omoa omoche, city council, Amsterdam South East. A omo boye maye nyuma kosu bibini hiaye. Eh, ye yariye ba ye, ye hunse nipabibri. Se owa setana se unia setana, nipabibri no mo eh nyuma abo omo. Na ujuma, wejuma bowa, na no no eh usika se muzwako ye niyo oho. Intino, oma tu, oma sheshe nyuma diye bibri. Ah, intino, se nipampim, ene be bisa se omo nyuma asaya. Ome tumi ayegye nyuma beye, ah hemu eh dia momo. Intine sa utifiye na owe juma se opa juma. Telephone number, ubeti mi afre, eh, zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. Zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. Zuidoost Werkt. Na email insua, ubeti mi, sa opesa osende email, insua ubitma sendi akos, zuidoostwerkt@amsterdam.nl, amsterdam.nl. O sendu email, ana so di email noko ho no ma. Ubeni obi na watun sa abao. So no no, abidinkita ho na wachra owa boao, ama wajese e juma. Areas baby eh ayayi nyuman ibi ewo eh eh to say detail handle, baby warehouses where a omo, ena omo omoche ayar for sort of productsi. Baby ayayi sisi siya nine, baby ayayi production zebra. Yeah, omo ye machines, omo ye nyani, omo ye inu ma bibri. And I, eh honu mina ubeti mi, eh nyaa eh juma eh dia ko. Nipa logistics, omo de inyama to say they are delivery of packages. Omoa omo ka, ka sakesiye, eh di nyani, niya dia ko supermarket, no miya dia. And also se nyuma, no so eh bi oho. Ena me ko so, ansu, ene ne kasa ena. Telephone number, we ya eh fre ye, telephone number, we ya me bo boss. Yeah, zero six one eight five three six seven zero zero. Sa telephone number, we ya, no so no se ofre eso. Na se, eh kasa no, eh yedat kasa no na wonte, ena opesa usiya dat kasa na. Ubeni obi, otritrimu, na ofile forms, na oko file forms, na ubeni obi ya okenki kasa, akankasa. Ama weti mi aboa o, ewo dat kasa ni misium. Se nebe ya, oso no, se otsati tikasa nasia. Udonse ne boao ma oko we din, oko peguma, udi mia se se oka, oko peguma, udi mia se se oye. Na boao, apa oso abra bo, akom, akonti. Eh, ni etosu, miensan ayekanwa sema, no niyekanwa sema etosu mi nu. Eh fa, says sport activities. Apo mo de, se oka bon ti, sami iba bebe. Ye inti mi intenefiye sa, osho aba, ye pesiya kwa bon ti. And no so no nsheshe, eh dahon no ma, oma ye sheshe. Eh ye Mandela Park, all sporting activities in yak bibri. And no no mi ni ra eh free. Eh hunya se oka kutyeska o Jimbi, ana se bibi. Telephone numbers na me bo bono. Eh ye telephone number, we, zero six three four four five zero eight six six. Zero six three four four five zero eight six six. Se ofre sa telephone number, ana oko Amsterdam Sport. Eh ye post office dada na, ewo Amsterdam Sport, you know. Post office dada ne, o Amsterdam Sport, you know. Ubeni obi, amo weti mi ni we din komo, no wachra o bebi, a ubeti niya kwa. Eh ye sa akonye, ana se eh moye oso, eh biti mi akan. Na eh eh Jacob Weidemeyer, anye nene kasa. Oka omoa omoche Amsterdam South East. Eh so eh ma inyama eh konti, nyuma opa juma. Niya oye biya, ne biti niya kosu, eh o abra bo. Corona no, ye gusso kono, ye gusso vaccinitya, huntenisa osonsa. Invitation, se na koi o vaccine, na mainso. Ni pabibri no musro, yati asie. But yen mayagene koso se vaccine biya no, eh one side effect. Intine se, oso se biya bibine beye, oube uwa ne biya. Ode oko, mi entritrimu, o questions, sa ubiti ma fre kikidi, for no match ritrimu. Men tenefiye na ngase media menko. Men kono eh wow, intino bomodi ana fre, fre kikidi for fre Rekogen Office. Bibi information, ya eh de menyano, o hea any questions, o hea bibi ana. Ubeti mi so, afre Rekogen Office. Noe bisa, na ya tritrimu, niya director, ama weti mi akon. Na wakwa jisamo yi eh bi. Okay, let me come back to Jacob. You see, I took you, I, I've spoken to you for some time.
Yes, okay, no problem.
So with the language, you say you even have Chi workers or volunteers who can help someone who does not speak English, but then want to learn the Dutch language? Which, which, which is because your foundation determines how far you can go. If, 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 if there is no means of communication, how would you be able to help the person? So looking at the rate of the vaccination, I would like to, before we go on chipping, you said at the beginning of this interview that you've already taken your first one. I haven't taken any yet, but I'm believing God that I will make my appointment and go and take it. Are there also plans to involve the same group of people, the vulnerable ones, the undocumented?
There are, yes. The undocumented people at this moment, they have to ask for the vaccination through their general practitioners, huisarts in Dutch. So I hope people are reporting themselves to the huisarts, to the general practitioners and ask when they are able to get a vaccine. Because all documented have, all undocumented have a right for a vaccination also. And they don't have to be afraid that they will be reported to the authorities because the doctors are obliged to keep their status secret. And, and yeah, it's, it's a very difficult issue because of course, many people are afraid to report themselves, or even to the doctors. On the other hand, we see many undocumented who have a general practitioner. So I would really advise to talk with each other as undocumented and to see which general practitioners are good and which can help you forward. It is necessary that you report you somewhere to get a vaccination. And I think the general practitioner is the best place to report yourself. In general, it's good to have a general practitioner. All undocumented in Holland are entitled to medical support.
So they are entitled to medical support. So they shouldn't be afraid to, to register at a, at a general practitioner, a doctor and say, I want you to be my doctor so that when I have health issues, I can you, for you to take care of me. And it also applies to the vaccination because every person is entitled to it. When you are documented or undocumented, you are entitled to it.
Yes, true, yeah.
Okay, good. And let's, let's, let's dive more into the testing and, and, and also, do we still, looking at now that so many people are being vaccinated and all of that, do we still have to go testing and all of that?
Yes, we do. Because still, especially in South East, where unfortunately, many people until now have decided not to vaccinate themselves, even the elderly. There are many rumors that you should not vaccinate yourself. And all these rumors are false. But unfortunately, many people are believing in. Especially in South East, you need to test yourself in order to protect yourself and also your family and your friends and your community against the virus. So we can still, we have this major test facility at the Nelson Mandela Park in the center. And people should just make the appointment to get tested if they are a little bit ill. Also, it's for free, we know that already, but I will repeat it here. It's for free to test yourself, no costs involved, yeah.
Okay, so no cost involved. You can just walk in without appointment and get tested. Don't be afraid that somebody is going to report you to any authorities. It is not something that they are doing to like trap you into the place so that they can report you or anything. So the testing is important so that at least we have database to prove the percentage of the people around that are either positive or negative. So we know if we, the vaccinate, the vaccination is helping us or not being vaccinated. So we know if we the vaccinate, not that the vaccination is helping us or not being vaccinated is helping. But the advice is that you get vaccinated, it's very, very important. You protect yourself, you protect your family members, you protect your 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 neighborhood so that you don't think, you know, this false, uh, then you have this false security, thinking that, oh, all is well. Meanwhile, you you might be sick, carrying it and infecting others with it.
Yes, the 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 strange thing with this disease is that you can infect people without being ill yourself. So you are infect, you're you are infecting other people who get very ill and you just have a cold. And actually, you have, you are carrying the virus. And other people, they are infected and they get very sick or are even killed, as we know, eh, many are killed.
Yeah, yeah.
Not only in the in the Netherlands, but in the United States. And we also see now in Af- in Africa also and all the countries, it's taking its toll. And especially in India, maybe we have, you have heard of about India, where are so many people killed because
Yeah.
too late, uh, the the government acted there. So we really want to to contain this virus in in order to protect everybody.
Okay, if you have any questions, so you are live on 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 our transmission, you have any questions, just send your questions in a chat zone so that I would ask Jacob about it. Um, we are continuing with a with an interview, I don't know how much time Jacob has again to spare me.
I am on my time, yes.
Oh, you, oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Now, well, I have some minutes still left, but uh.
Okay, okay, that that's good. So so you can you can you can type your message in in it, in a, in a, your question in the message uh link so that I would ask Jacob about it. So
Yes.
Let me put uh the the testing, the Corona dashboard uh information also into on on the tree so that uh my people would understand. Um. Oh, oh, nah, you, 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 nah, in, me, are, eh, be, oh, oh, nah, eh, be, ah, who, tea, oh, yeah, oh, me, no, mokka, oh, 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 me, see, oh, you know, oh, who, say, oh, who, fa, wa, who, Timmy, eh, quote, este, oh, me, yeah, so, be, ah, appointment, eh, so, so, oh, quote, este, be, eh, be, necessary, oh, este, oh, este, ah, who, be, to me, eh, who, say, when, yeah, be, and now, who, yeah, be, so, yeah, be, eh, enko, ban, eh, say, oh, the, eh, sign, oh, young, oh, and now, eh, bush, yeah, for,